Alright, excuse me. So it's 6:16. We'll call the meeting to order. Everyone should know that the meeting is being recorded. We have two board members attending remotely. So Julia and April, what we'll need to do is we'll need to have you state your names, where you are, if there's anybody with you, and your reason for attending remotely. So Julia, can you start?
Absolutely. Julia Killily, I am in Avon, Connecticut. I'm here by myself. And I am out of the area currently, so that's why I'm attending remotely.
Thank you, April.
Hi, I'm April Anderson, and I'm I am attending remotely out of abundance of caution as someone close to me is waiting to get test results.
Okay, and you are home?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm home alone in my bedroom.
Alright, cool. Um, excuse me. Also, just everyone knows when we have members attending remotely, when we call any votes, we will need to do the roll call votes for the people attending remotely so that we can confirm what your vote is. Okay, so when we do a vote, we'll just need to check with you individually to see what your vote is, okay?
Hmm?
Alright. Um, so I just have something I need to present to the board. First off, to start the meeting, dear Superintendent Willridge and fellow school board members, thank you for all the faith you've shown to me by electing me as school board chair for a second year. While I appreciate this, like, while I accepted this position knowing the responsibilities as chair, I had hoped that this school year would not be a repeat of the last school year. Chair in the school board during a pandemic has presented a daunting amount of demands on my time. I've been a school board member for seven and a half years, and the time demands this past year were excessive. Yet I stepped up and met those demands and challenges to the best of my ability. Even though this new school year had just begun, things seem a far cry from returning to normal, and the demands being placed on my time as chair are only increasing. Earlier this year, I accepted an additional responsibilities at my job that can require me to be out of town for a week or more at a time. This is making it nearly impossible for me to accommodate the increasing demands on my time by the district. After much soul searching, I have decided that my job and personal commitments must take priority. Therefore, I am informing you of my intent to step down from my position as chairperson effective immediately. Thank you for your understanding. Respectfully submitted, well, me.
Wayne? So obviously, that's not a vote. That's not a choice the board has. I know we would accept with regret if we had that. So at this point, we don't have a chair, so the floor is open for nominations for chair. I see a nomination.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, sure. I nominate Holly.
Alright, second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Any further nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Holly as the board chair. Say aye.
Aye.
And we'll need
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
So Holly, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, thank you. We need a nomination for vice chair.
I nominate Sean.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, any further nominations? All those in favor of Sean as vice chair, say aye.
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 And Julia?
Aye.
And obviously, I'll abstain.
Well, no, you can vote for yourself.
I'm not like that.
You can. Alright, great. Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. I would like to thank Sean very much. Having been chair for nine years myself, I know the demands and time commitment of chair in a normal situation, and during a pandemic, it is. It's been just, you know, a real, it's really been, like you said, just the demands have been very excessive. And, and, and thank you, Sean, for sticking out this long in light of your, your new responsibilities at work.
Thank you.
So we appreciate everything, and a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now I just need a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of September 8th, and public and, and public minutes of September 20th.
I'll make a motion to accept that group of minutes as presented.
Okay. Um, any discussion, correction? Okay, all those in favor of accepting this group of minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, board business. So we have board reassignments, committee reassignments to reassign. Oh, well, actually, before we do that, just I'm flipping through my packet, Anne has included in here the info sheet with all of our information. I just want to point it out in case we miss it. If there's any corrections to your information, please let Anne know. Um, so, okay, so committee reassignments. So we're, are reassigning committees because, you know, to fill in where Kayla was. But also, if anybody, you know, we can discuss if anybody wants to switch anything around, we can do that too. So I'll just go down the list. So currently, we have the personnel committee with Sean and Julia, and I think that one is one that we will not let you switch right now. Um, health and wellness, Jim and Julia, if you
I'm good.
Would like to do that?
Yeah, it's good.
Um, so representatives to the budget and finance committee. So, um, the representatives for those committees are myself and Kayla. So we will need another board member to, to, you know, join that, those committees.
I'm okay with joining if nobody else wants it.
And it's, it's the alternate, so it would be, you know, if, if I couldn't make it, you know, as a member, so.
Okay.
Okay, so April for that. Kayla was on the staff development committee, so who would like that?
I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, I was the alternative for that, so I can maintain that position, or we can do it together or whatever. Yeah, that's great. I mean, it kind of makes sense. It seems to maybe have April take over.
Great. Um, let's see. So Legislative NHSBA, that is Jim and myself, and I think both of us would like to keep that one.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, has, Kayla was the member, and I was the alternate, so I could stay the alternate.
I'd like to do that. I've done it. I did it with the PTA, so that would be something I'd like to do.
Thank you. Yeah, and that meets quarterly right before our board meeting. Rep to the selectmen is Sean, and I am the alternate. I mean, I would be fine if somebody wanted that. I'm fine staying on it, so whatever.
Well, I'm just, I mean, it kind of involves jumping ahead a little bit, but I was, I have a very strong interest in going to the behavioral support committee for Kayla's spot. But to do that, I would want to come off of community connections and possibly the selectmen as well.
I mean, I would like to say the alternate to selectmen, I can't commit to every Monday night. So I don't know if anybody could commit to that, or if we could, you know.
I can keep it if nobody else wants it, but to take on the other one, I just need to free up some time.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Right, that's the other thing, too, with, with negotiations.
Yeah, with negotiations, absolutely.
It'll be a month that I'm, that you'll be doing it anyway.
I mean, I remember when I first got on the board, it was only, you only expected
Yeah, you don't
Go once a month, not every Monday. So if, if I could, you know, if, if that could be the expectation, I can't do every Monday, but I could do it certainly the Monday after our board meeting, and then another Monday during the month.
So if we're on that train of thought, I mean, if you wanted to do one day after the meeting, I could do two weeks after that, and we could
Okay, so we could just alternate me and you.
Maybe two weeks.
Okay. Alright.
That's good with, that's good with the selectmen.
Yeah, it's up to us what, who goes there, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so emergency management, we have Jim and Julia.
That's also facilities, I'll say that.
Did I skip facility?
It really should just say facilities and emergency management, just be part of facilities, but
Yeah, sorry, I missed that. Alright, so you guys keep in that. And then, okay, so community connections, as Sean said, he would like to come off of that one, and, and I think I already slid in temporarily, right, for Kayla. So I, so I'd like to stay on a Kayla's spot.
I don't mind doing that one either, if anybody else wants it.
Okay, yes, if nobody else wants that, we'll put April down for that. Tuition implementation, I'll stay on that. Like you said, that's just a placeholder. And behavior support committee, Sean has expressed that interest. Okay, so we'll put Sean in there, and then I, I'll stay on joint law. Alright, great. Thank you all. Okay, next up, we have updates for COVID-related items. So Wayne and whoever else.
So I would, you know, I do report out the numbers that are available on Wednesday that I send the report out. Today, those numbers are up. So we had 3.4 as positivity rate last Wednesday, now we're 3.6. We, over the past 14 days, last Wednesday, we had 229, now we're at 339. And I would, I think everyone here is aware that community transmission is pretty hard to predict. But at this point, we would say that not likely that you would hold an event inside without a mask in close contact and, and not, you know, not have or not catch COVID, whether you would respond to it, whether it be in symptoms, I think that would be another thing. So we're doubling down, and I do have one possible avenue that maybe the board would consider that we look at, and I will bring it to you next November. And that would be use some of the SRO3 money, maybe to, if there's a health professional out there to help with our nurses, and the possibility of, there's a lot of free tests available and begin some kind of not, not a gotta be tested, or this isn't, you know, your choice, but if they, if, just have that available at the district site so that we could, you know, test when there's a situation that looks like it's necessary, and maybe just kind of a random test wouldn't be a bad idea. I just, you know, I'd like, as Sean thought, that maybe last year we'd be all done with it, but doesn't look like that's going to happen anytime soon. So I, that's not a proposal for the board. It's just asking you to go ahead and sort of flesh something out for the November meeting, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, what do you guys think?
I'd be fine with that.
Sure, I would as well.
Me too.
So I'll, I'll move with that, and I'll meet with the administrators first week of November and have something, you know, that would not be onerous, because our staff can't afford any other burden. That's the problem. Our nurses can't take any more time out of their day either, but maybe there's a way to move around that. I know they're doing that at Westman right now, that seems to be working.
Yeah. Alright, does anybody have any questions or comments for Wayne? About COVID?
Nope.
What about you guys?
I think I'm good. I've got some public stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I just, I can't see from here, and let's be honest, even if I was over there, I probably couldn't see it. But is, are either of the nurses on? I had requested, if possible, one of the nurses be on, because I had questions last month that weren't able to be answered because they weren't on. But I, there's too many people on.
There's, yeah, the nurses are not on. I can probably answer questions. We're in constant contact daily.
Yeah, I remember last month I asked questions, and we didn't have, you know,
They're already working.
I understand. Alright, so I'll ask my questions, and if we can't, I'd like an answer from the nurses then, because this is kind of important. But so, and I spoke away about this yesterday. So I just need one, I would like a clear walkthrough of notifications and contact tracing, because everything that we received from the nurses and reading from the CDC, um, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, that I just want to see how we're doing this, because like, for example, okay, so, so I was going to ask the nurse this scenario. So say we have a positive case, and, um, the person, so backtracking, the person had symptoms on a Wednesday. They were in school the previous two days, so they're in school Monday, Tuesday. They have symptoms on a Wednesday, get tested. They find out they're positive on the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, whatever. They notify us the next Monday. What we've been being told, when we get the email, the board gets the email with all the cases, they met a number of cases that, okay, they haven't been in the building since such and such a date. According to the CDC and DHHS, you're supposed to say, what was the day of your symptoms starting? Look back 48 hours and notify close contacts, and the board agreed several months ago that if the person was in school when they were contagious per the definition, a notice would go out to parents. So in this case, like, as an example, um, would we be notifying parents in close contacts? If the person was in, was, had symptoms on Wednesday, was in school Monday and Tuesday, and we, they didn't find out and tell us till the next Monday? And the, you know, they weren't in school since the Wednesday. So that's, that's my question.
The, the, they, close contacts would be notified. They're always notified. What the board policy is, is that the student, and I have, is what Sean presented at the, I think, the last meeting, is if they have not been in school 48 hours, we would not have to go out with a call to parents.
Okay, we're gonna
And that's the, that's the rule we've been following.
So we're gonna have
That was approved in September.
We're gonna have to look at that, because that's not what our understanding has been. Sean and I talked about it a couple, you know, and Wayne and I talked about it. So you're saying if this happened recently, the close contacts would have been notified on Monday?
Yes, or Tuesday, or whenever.
Monday, when we found out. The close contacts were notified.
We weren't notified.
On Monday. We were, you sent us an email Monday.
Yes, but that was, has been not involving
Okay, okay, I got, I got, I got an answer. Okay, so, thank you.
Do we need to refine that 48 hours?
Yeah, well, I think we, I thought, and I can go back and look at what we approved, but, you know, you know, I've talked about this, that if, if contacts needed to be notified, that meant a person was in the building while they were contagious, that a notice would go out to parents, and of course, the close contacts were notified. I, that's what our understanding was, but we could be wrong about that, but
Close contacts are always notified. The nurses always notify, like, the people that this person, like, if it's a, let's just say a first grade classroom, that classroom, all parents are notified um, that their, their child has been exposed to, go, a, someone who had
Yeah, someone who's tested, yeah, in their contagious period, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
And on Monday's case, they had not been in school for already a week.
But they were in school when they were contagious. They were in school Monday and Tuesday when they were contagious. They absolutely were.
They were not in school. They were not in school.
We're not, we're not gonna, we can discuss it in non-public. We'll table that and discuss it in non-public. Anyway, but in this fictitious scenario is what I'm saying, okay? So, alright, so I got an answer, I got an answer to the question. So I, and Sean, to your question, um, yeah, I mean, that's up to the board. That was, I think, our understanding, was that a notice would go out if someone was here when they were contagious. Perhaps we were mistaken.
Well, I know that there were several conversations, you know, back and forth as far as, is it, because we talked about 48 hours, you know, like, several times, and we all talked about the 48 hours several times. I think there's been confusion as far as what 48 hours we're talking about. Is it from that contagious period? Is it from when they get the tests, when they, when they take the test or get the test? I know we've had several different scenarios. Right, so it might be good that, you know, if you, after you have, you know, the non-public, when we come back in public, we, if we need to refine that 48 hours, I would suggest that we do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense.
That makes sense, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And then, yeah, that, that was my main question. So, um, yeah, so we will revisit that in non-public.
I mean, is that okay with April and Julia?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for asking.
This is the first time I'm chairing a meeting with remote people, so Sean just may remind me.
Yeah.
That I feel
It's an extra challenge, because you got to pay attention to what's in here, also what's going on up there. Julia will tell you, I often forget to look up and see that she has a question.
Alright, yeah. Feel, yeah, I won't be offended at all if you remind me.
Alright.
Okay, alright, so if there's no more questions about the COVID update, thank you, Wayne, thank you, Anne. Next up is accepting the 1920 auditor's report. Or who would like to speak, Jody, to this, or Jody and Wayne?
Jody has, uh, through it. We get an auditor's report every year. This particular report came much later. You know, we're already into the, the auditors are here looking at the last year. So this, and you're really looking back into the past, but there was only one negative finding, one corrective action.
One corrective action.
And Jody can speak to that better than I. I think it's probably happened frequently with the new Gatsby and all the grants.
Well, and it is. It's a, it's a new, it's a new rule that we need to follow, time and effort reporting for folks that are paid out of grants. We have to have something from them that says that they acknowledge they're paid out of a grant. And there's different forms depending on how they're paid, whether they're paid as a 100% of them out of the grant, or if a portion of their, of their pay comes out of the grant. So we, we met, as soon as we got the corrective action plan, we met, we created a procedure, it is in place. We put a 10-15 date to start it, but it's, it started prior to that. The auditors came in today to audit the new, the new year, the year that ends June 20th, June 1920, 2021, sorry. And they're very happy with what we have in place, so I think it was something that probably just slipped through the cracks, because it started in the 1920 year.
Does anybody have questions about that for Jody? You guys?
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes.
Julie and April, any questions?
No, I'm all good, thanks.
Nope, she covered it.
Yes, thank you. Um, so then, uh, so we need a motion to accept
We accept the report. We can't approve the report.
Yeah.
To ask questions. But I think we can accept it. I think it, and they're certainly a great firm with great reputation. I have no reason to believe it isn't a great audit.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
A second.
Okay, any more, any further discussions? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the 1920 auditor's report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose. Thank you.
Yeah, check with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw their mouths move. Okay, right, though. April and Julia.
Aye.
Yai.
Thank you, and thank you, Sean.
No problem.
I'm gonna miss it, probably every time.
That's okay. I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just remind you, and
I don't mind at all. Alright, next up is the life of an athlete discussion. Um, who is leading, what, Anne?
So this is the document that boards approved, and we're, we're finishing up our fall season and moving on to the winter season soon. Both our athletic director tonight is coaching out of town, and the other individual that we had planned to have here to help speak to it, as she was a big part of the original document draft, I was unable to attend for, you know, real, serious reasons. So I think what, if there are questions the board has that we could bring to this group and put this on the agenda for November, I don't know, Anne, if you feel differently, but
No, we'll try to answer any questions. Administration worked with the athletic staff on this, and we'll try to answer questions. I'll take your questions back to them, and we can solidify this next month, if that's okay. With your approval, eventually, this would then go back to NHIAA, who would give us the final blessing on the document. So the highlighted changes in yellow, some of them are typed in red. Some of these have immediately been put into effect, for example, some of the coaches' responsibilities we felt needed to be addressed immediately on page four, that any team discipline would be issued by the coach and the athletic director only. So we, we felt that was an important distinction to make, and that we wanted the team rules from the coaches in writing, so they're clear and everyone knows what they are. So there are some things that we've put into effect immediately, just to clarify everybody's roles and responsibilities. So if you've got questions, I know it's a 24-page document, you may need some more time to just sleep on it and think on it, and
So does anybody have any questions? And also, is it fine with also putting this on for next month to follow up more with everybody? So, Sean?
Uh, so I was the one who asked Wayne to put this on the agenda and have it looked at, just with the behavioral issues that we're seeing across the board, I mean, across the entire school, not just with athletes, not just with any particular group, with everybody. I thought that it was worthwhile to have this brought back up. I know when we last reviewed this, we did make it a little bit less strict, a little bit more lenient. And I'm thinking, given, given what we've been seeing this year in particular, that we might want to look at some of that and kind of, you know, put it back to something that was a little bit more, a little bit more firm, which I see that is, is being done. I'm liking what I'm seeing. I'm also curious, and maybe this is, maybe this is, is an answer to no, right? I know life of an athlete is a completely and totally separate thing than like the behavioral support stuff.
Yeah.
Completely separate, but is there any way that
Make sure the door shuts.
Is there any way that that group can even like, look at it to see if there's anything that dovetails together with each other? You know what I mean? So it's a more cohesive effort between both groups, or is it just too totally separate? So separate that that doesn't even make sense?
No, that, that makes perfect sense, because one of the things we talked about in our discussion with the athletic department was somebody who has chronic tier-one offenses, little things, you know, tardy to school, whatever, that those chronic offenses eventually should go to a tier-two, because it's habitual behavior that really deteriorates the whole school climate and culture. So I think it makes perfect sense to have the behavioral support committee in the building, at the building level. Take a look at this. We're going to meet next week, and I think their input on the document would be wonderful. That's a great idea.
Okay.
No, that's a good idea, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I'm fine, you know, putting it off till November, kind of getting that input, seeing what happens, and, you know, I, I guess we can wait till committee reports, because I want to find out who we talked to about getting the district team, you know, together sooner rather than later, too. So, um, and now, it's my understanding that all of the athletes, you know, when they sign up, you know, before the athletic starts, that them and their parents get the handbook, they, they have the full policy, and then they sign off on it. So we do have signed contracts from everyone on every team?
We do.
Alright.
And the way the contract reads is that I understand. It's not just I got the book.
Right.
I understand what this means. But again, I think, um, some of our complacency about not addressing tier-one types of offenses really has to be addressed. I would agree with that.
Alright. That was my only question, and I appreciate
Yeah, no, that's
Being receptive of the suggestion.
Great idea.
Um, Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I had a question, um, when it's in grudge to the responsibilities of coaches. And when you look through the bullet list, I don't see anything in it that says that the coaches and assistant coaches have to be present during practices and games.
Page, are you watching?
Page four. To the coaches.
Yep. That's a great point to add.
So I would think that if they're getting stipends, which I think they are, that, um, it needs to be put on there, that they are expected to be present at practices, and if they can't be, then they need to designate their assistant coach or someone else so that, you know, students aren't practicing, you know, under the guidance of other students. You know, that seems to be a bad, potentially a bad mix for behavioral You know, that seems to be a bad, potentially a bad mix for behavioral
That's a good point.
Issues. And I mean, games, you would think that they were there. So it's probably a little more focused on practices, but really games should be part of that same
Especially at start.
Stipulation, I, in my opinion. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree 100%.
Yep.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Julia, do you have anything?
I'm good, thanks. I think time to kind of absorb it a little bit more is a great idea.
Yeah.
And looking at it as a more of a holistic approach to, as Sean suggested, it's great.
Yeah. April, do you have anything?
Uh, nope, nothing to add at this point.
Okay.
I think the only, if I, if I may, I think the only other thing that I'd like to add is, and I, you know, I've, I've read it. I read it originally. I read it when it was reviewed. I read it this time around. But, you know, again, just being business, I think I'm sure I missed it. When we reviewed this last time, we made the academic restrictions to participate a little bit looser. Did we, I might have missed it. Did we tighten that back up or?
No. We did not, because there was, at that time, there, if you recall, there were many, many parents requesting that we just go by the last marking quarter grading, not look at progress reports, not look at exams. So we, we, we've, you know, stepped to that last marking quarter.
My preference would be if we could start tightening up, you know, kind of go back to tightening up the academic requirements as well. I would, I would personally like to say, if it's possible.
And I remember we struggled with that last time.
Yep.
As well, so, yeah.
But when we are looking at everything that's happening this year and everything, I'm like, you know what, I, I really feel strongly that we kind of step up a little bit and put those academic requirements back where they need to be.
As you know, our academic requirements now are much higher than those allowed by NHIAA. So you are stricter already.
Oh, yeah. We don't, we don't need to go like over the ceiling.
No.
Anything else, Sean?
Nope, good. Those are my concerns.
Um, I had, and I do appreciate having another month to look at it and getting feedback from behavior support. But I did have one question and, I mean, I just want to clarify for myself. So like you said, like the highlighted pieces are, and pieces in red are new.
Some might be in blue as well.
Okay, that was my question. So like on page 12, where, you know, about where it says fourth period and fourth period is highlighted, and then blue is half the school day. So are they, is that both new, or what it used to be? Because usually when things happen, there was a strike through for what used to be there. So.
It used to be a time, it used to say something like 11 o'clock or 10:57, the beginning of the fourth period. And we, we have some members of the committee who will recognize that there's maybe a change in schedule next year, possibly.
Okay.
So if the schedule were to change, we still want to say half a day, and half a day is four periods, basically. So you've got to be there for half the day.
Okay, so does that sort of thing happen in others' places? My only reason in questioning that is that I didn't, I couldn't lay my hands on my copy of the actual Life of an Athlete handbook. So.
We can get you one.
Oh, 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 no, that's fine. But generally, and I've done this before in different groups and committees and things at work, that you strike through what's there so that when you're looking at the document, you can see what's there.
Okay.
And then you add the new stuff in bold or red or highlight. So that way you have right in front of you, you don't have to be looking at multiple things. So, and I don't want to put more work on anybody. So if, so yeah, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to lay my hands on mine and if not, I'll get one from you.
Okay.
But just, just, that was just my, my thing is that it would have been helpful to have strike through for what was there. So we could see what was there. But, but that, but, you know, I don't want to put extra work on anybody. So. Um, all right, so those, it seems like all the questions. So if nobody has any other questions, then we will, thank everybody for your work so far in this. Let, let Sam and, and everybody else who's worked on this know, give them our thanks. Um, so next up, we have the review of the memorandum of understanding with the HNSBA Federation of Teachers. So there's probably a plethora of people in this room who could speak to that, whichever one of you would like to.
And remote.
Yeah, and remote. Go ahead.
Wayne, do you want to start or do you want me to go?
But the, there are several minor variations, but I think the big one is the time that we, we're recommending an adjustment, basically start five minutes later. And Joe's building, rather than 8:35, personally, it would be 8:40. Buses, I've talked to the first student, they could do this as early as Monday. Next week, we'd have to get something out to parents. And so we'd be pushing the start back five minutes and the same kind of thing at the middle high school that between, we see would be access until 8:30. You know, but teachers who are dealing with all the uncertainties of COVID protocols, worrying about COVID. In addition to trying to maintain the social distancing and all of the other things and control behaviors, deal with students who have more challenges probably than were typical prior to the COVID-19. So it's just a way to kind of soften and be more cognizant of their workday. So we just need the approval of the board and other, if there's anything else, Sean, that we want to speak to.
Well, it's, it's similar to the time adjustments that we made last year, and, you know, particularly at the middle high school, where we're trying to not have the kids congregate in one area, you know, to, to a great extent. And we're allowing them to get into that classroom, you know, sooner than they would normally have. So we spoke with the union and we worked out, you know, because there's different things that happen in the elementary school, obviously it happens in middle high school. So Anne was good enough to give us the information as far as what we needed to do at the high school. And then we got information from Joe as far as what needed to happen at the elementary school. We spoke to, Donna was representing the, well, the, um, in the union, right? But Donna was talking to us about the elementary school and Teresa and Sarah were talking to us about the middle high school. So we went back and forth, trying to figure out, okay, so how, how are the times going to work? How is this all going to work? And the language was developed that you see here, as Wayne said, to adjust those times.
At the elementary, we did have to find some pairs, some people that we had in the system to help cover a few, you know, a few cases. I think there were half a dozen. But basically, we're, we're prepared to go this beginning Monday if the board approves and Anne, you're ready to go?
Honestly, we've been doing this. So.
Sounds like Anne's ready to go.
She's ahead of the game. She's an overachiever. Well, we've had, you know, so, you know, to, I don't mean to speak for you, but I mean, kind of had to, you know, we kind of had, it's been taking some time to work out the language, taking some time to get it ratified by the union and then to come to the board. And meanwhile, we've still had.
You still couldn't put the kids all together.
We've still had the COVID issue. So, you know, the conversations were had early on and we knew that we had to make an MOU, but the union was really fantastic about working with us to try to keep, keep the kids safe. And meanwhile, this is just, you know, the rest of us, you know, putting this all together to get it done, you know, more officially. But Anne and the union have been working together really, really well to, you know, to make this happen.
So you said it has been ratified by the HFT already?
That's what we were told, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it was. I believe that's the, I got that message.
That's just my usual question with this.
Right.
This has been about, okay.
I mean, Donna's on, she can confirm.
I think we got that, that's the message we got.
Yeah, we did, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, it was confirmed by the HFT last week at a meeting.
Yes.
So that's what I thought. Thank you, Donna.
All right, does anybody have any questions about this? Um, anybody here in the room? I mean, Sean wouldn't, but Jim, do you have a question? No? No? Do you have a question, Jim?
No.
Okay, thank you. Julia or April?
No.
No? My only question is, and just because I've, I've read this sentence three times, and it's probably just me. Um, we're about the middle high school, you know, will not, students will not have access to classrooms until 7:30. With the understanding there will be no duties for those covered under the contract. What does the second part of that sentence actually mean? And I think maybe I just not, I don't know why I'm not understanding. What does it mean, no do, so they don't have to watch the kids? Is, what does that mean?
So the duties that would normally be in place would be morning cafeteria duty. Yeah, um, we used to have people walking the halls. Everybody had a one period of a day that they would walk the halls.
Oh, during COVID.
During COVID last year.
Okay, thank you.
So we did do some of those extra duties. But in other words, there is no cafeteria duty. There, there is, there is no hall monitoring, but I will say people still do it. They, those who liked it really still do it.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's the piece where, like, I, I understood there was no cafeteria duty because that's the whole point of this. But the, I, the piece with the new walking the hall COVID that got added, okay, that's the piece that, that I just wasn't connecting. All right, thank you, Anne. Um, okay, so if there's no further questions, I just need a motion to accept the MOU with the HFT. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And Julia and April, just if you say aye, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did the, should the motion have included asking the chair to approve in the chair's side? Or is that just given?
Um, I think it's given because when we, when we approve the contract, I think they, the chair gets automatically signed. But good question. Thank you. Well, I just set that out, or do you have one or whatever? We'll figure it out. All right, we'll figure it out. Um, all right, so next up, policy update. So we have a first reading of a group of policies that you see there on number six. Um, and it looks like, uh, thank you, Anne, you included the fall policy update from the NHSBA, which, which, you know, gives a little blurb about what's changing in the different policies. And then we have the, the actual policies pulled out here, the ones that we're looking at. So I just need a motion to accept those as a first reading.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion? No?
No.
Julia or April, any discussion on those policies?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, so then, all those in favor of accepting those as a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
And Julia and April?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
It becomes second nature in no time.
I, and I hear him say aye, but I'm still asking him.
Yeah.
So that's great. All right, um, all right, so, um, on to any other business. Does anybody have any other business?
Yeah, I just have, I just want the board to make sure that they read the letter from Ashley concerning the program that she would like to.
Yeah, if you want to start, thank you. So this is our information. We don't, we don't have to approve this or anything.
No, you don't have to approve it. I just, you know, she wanted to make sure that she was doing everything correctly.
And that we're all aware of it.
Yes.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments about this? I think it sounds.
Oh, none of this letter I have.
I'm sorry, Jim, what?
I don't have comments about this letter, but I have.
But you have other digits? Okay. Great, so, um, Jim, um.
Okay, so we'll go with the, with the letter?
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, so, so, um, just a couple of things. First of all, it's covered in Joe's note, but thank you to the elementary school for the dog license vote. Appreciate that. Um, the HEF approved mini grants earlier this week, seven grants totaling $2,600 approximately will be distributed. So thank you to everybody in the, the community that put in their applications for that. The Tile Project is moving forward this year. The theme is Dreams of the Future. So thank you again to the elementary school on that. And not really related to the district, but Sari Udon did note that the community center will be celebrating its 25th anniversary in January. And they're planning a, a sort of celebration. So going forward, people just maybe keep an eye out for that. And I think HEF will probably be there. But it's sort of a big event for the, for the community center. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Sean, do you have anything?
Um, I have, this is a non-public, so I don't have anything for public.
Okay. Julia, do you have anything for other business?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
April?
No, I do not.
Thanks. And I do not have anything. Um, all right, so moving on to reports. So the financial report, Joey.
My financial report is in the board package. And do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Joey, Connor, Jim?
I do not.
I don't have anything for.
I was just going to say that in her letter, that she's currently working on way forward date of 6030, 2020, 21.
You know, yeah, I know, sorry, a little typo there.
I was like, wow, she's really, she's really ahead of it.
Well, if it, if it helps, I'm, I was currently working on four different years at one time. So my head's spinning with dates. I, I do have a couple of things that the auditors presented me today. It's mostly housekeeping. Holly, I need a, an engagement letter for the current audit, the June 30th, 2021 audit to be signed. And then there's just another form that needs to be signed.
Okay. And I'll pass those back to you in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, thank you very much. Um, next up is curriculum report and I think Wayne, or um, Wayne can answer any questions in Karen's absence.
Karen is not able to be here tonight, but I certainly have to answer any questions. You can see that there's a lot happening and I'm very involved.
Does anybody have any questions about curriculum?
I just wanted to know what a PCL was, a PLC.
Yeah, that's a professional learning community. And typically, a professional learning community is a little different than a committee in that it's a, more like a task force. The group has a problem that they're looking to solve. They use data, the idea that a, a member of that group who's passionate and has some expertise might chair or lead that group. There's no administrative type automatic leadership involved. And there's a timeline. It's a legal way, it's kind of based on the eighties total quality management and Sengay's model and eventually was brought into education by the DeFores. So it's something we embraced quite a while ago and I think most schools in America now have.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you, Wayne. Um, technology, Deb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Deb? Sean or Jim?
Nope. No.
No, congratulations on getting all those laptops out.
It was a bear.
So congratulations and thank you for getting that done.
Thank you.
April, do you have any questions for Deb?
I do not.
Great, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
All right, um, principal report. Okay, so, um, high school principal, Anne Freech.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say thank you to Sean for his leadership over the last few years.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Holly. Um, I think we're excited about some of the things that are happening this year. It's, it's nice to actually hear kids laughing and smiling. We did have a high school dance Saturday night that was very well attended and the kids were very well behaved. And that, that takes a lot from me at this point to say that, but the kids were great. They even danced. Yeah, they danced, which is a miracle. Um, we're going to do the youth risk behavior survey this year. Chris is going to manage that and it's an online type survey this year. It's not paper and pencil, so that will be done for seniors and down to ninth grade. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Anybody have any questions for Anne?
I'm curious, when was the last time we had, we did YRBS?
We didn't do it last year and I don't think we did it the year before. So it's, this would be like three years lapse, maybe. It's, we didn't do it last year, and I don't think we did it the year before, so it's, this'll be like three years lapse maybe. And again, be- because of COVID, they, we were going to, but no, no way, so I think that's what happened, I think COVID kind of put a spin on everything.
Do, um, I just remember years back when we had it, uh, because there's actually some really good data in there, is that something that you usually give us a copy of, or can we get a copy of?
Yes, so get a copy of it, I think we, I think we'd like to share that data because, like you said, there's really good questions in there.
Very good questions.
I suspect that kids are gonna be more honest on their laptops.
Agreed.
Probably true.
Yeah.
And even today, when we did the PSATs, the students said, I wish we had done this on our laptops instead of paper pencil, but we did paper pencil because we really weren't sure, you know, there were some issues with technology, and thankfully, we had people in the department to help out, so for kids who did have to do like the MP3s, those are on a laptop, so that's, you know, it's like, um, they read it to you instead of you having to read it yourself, some of the stuff.
Right.
So anyway, onwards and forwards, we'll see what happens.
Great.
Jim, you have anything for Ann?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, do you have anything for Ann?
I'm good, thanks so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Nope, I'm good, thanks.
And I don't have anything, thank you, Ann. All right, Joe?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair, you have my report, happy to answer any questions if there are any. Things are off to a good start, surprisingly.
That's great.
Challenging, but good.
Good, that's nice to hear. Any questions, um, Sean or Jim?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I'm okay.
Julia? I'm good, thank you. April?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Yep, and I'm all set, so thank you, Joe. I think superintendent's report, Wayne?
Chair, you have my report, I'm happy to answer any questions, the, you know, ESTR funding, I think we've spent about, uh, another thirty thousand in ESTR two and another twenty-seven or something like that in ESTR three, so it's moving slowly in those funds, but, uh, you know, we are, I think, named them fairly well, we're not able to maybe hire everyone that we had thought of, um, briefly, so that's why there's, you know, a lot of money left in those funds. We're to look at. Um, ESTR two, we have four hundred and thirty thousand remaining out of the eight fifty-eight and, uh, ESTR three. We have, uh, one million, uh, two seventy-two, and out of that, we have one million, two twenty-five left. So we're just getting started with that, and we have a third allocation we anticipate sometime, probably before your next meeting. A third of the one, two bucks. A lot likely, uh, be around six hundred and five thousand.
Um, I just, just, I just remembered this when we briefly talked before meeting, and the, the piece about ESTR funds that we, uh, proposal, was that public or non-public?
Yeah, that's, uh, public around those, uh, um, the thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, so, do you want to bring that up?
Yeah.
No, I just, I just remembered, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure where that fit in, and it just reminded members.
Yeah, and Kev would present this if you were here, but we've got, um, eight employees, uh, that we have, that are employed by the grant that do not receive the thousand dollars in PD that our other employees receive. Uh, and we would like to take a thousand dollars out of the grant for each one of these employees for the next two years so that they have PD or literacy specialists, math specialists, match co- math coaches, literacy coaches. Uh, these are people that are really, could benefit from PD, and I understand they're, they really want the PD, but we don't have anything in a budget, uh, out of our regular budget for PD for, uh, specialists.
So, so we should just, you know, discuss that and let Karen know where we stand on that, so what do you guys think?
Is it, um, is it? Is it one of the uses for the money that's covered in the grant, like the grant says you can do this?
Yes, this would be, we just neglected to write it in.
Okay.
And it's for people we hired using the grant, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay.
So we don't rewrite the grant every month, because when we write it, it takes a long time before they release it. And we have, you know, our business department, they is already, uh, definitely doing a lot, so, uh, we would, we're trying to do this quarterly, so this would just get it in the queue so that when we next rewrite the grant, we'd have one for PD, for this year, next year.
Okay.
All grant funded, no district taxpayer.
Any, any questions about that, Jim?
No, no question.
Yeah, I have a quick question, just to, uh, explain it maybe a little bit more, so you're talking about the staff gets paid for PD, I'm not following.
So all of the teachers currently get a thousand dollars a year, up to professional development funds. Uh, and we've got, you know, some great opportunities, and with, you know, our PLC sometime identify professional development that would benefit their effort, uh, but we have eight, uh, employees that we've employed through ESTR money.
Right, no, I understand that, so this is PD in addition to what we're scheduled, like the PD days, this is additional.
Yeah, this is additional.
That they go off on their own and they have up to a thousand dollars to attend seminars or, okay.
Right, and frequently today, a lot of this is zoomed, uh, but it's still not free.
Okay.
At least this gives Karen the opportunity and the principals to approve, uh, professional development for these people that are working with us under grants. You know, they're, they're in the same conditions, but we neglected to put the PD in, and given it would be all grant funds, it wouldn't impact their, our budget. And, you know, I think we, Karen thinks we should do it, I agree, uh, and I've given her conviction that this is something we need to do more quickly than I may have thought, uh, I just wanted the board approval, and then we can get it in the queue so that the next time we rewrite, it's eight thousand a year, uh, for, you know, eight people, for two years. That's up to, so they're not going to use every dollar, but it gives us, uh, an opportunity to tell the, say, literacy specialists that if there's a PD opportunity at teen state or online, that would be a real value, and it's approved by your supervisor, and, and Karen Thompson approves. Uh, we have the funds in the grant that can help support that.
Okay, thank you.
April?
Um, I'd just like to say that it sounds like, uh, we should do it, the, um, I mean, we obviously want our teachers, even our specialists, to be the best they can, so if they can find stuff that, you know, helps them out, I'm all for it.
Yeah, thank you, so we need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, it's part of our ESTR funds as we've approved everything. Anytime there's a doubt, so I'll make a motion to approve up to eight thousand dollars a year for two years for the eight grant-funded positions out to come from ESTR monies for PD.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, um, approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Um, all right, committee reports, uh, personnel committee.
Uh, so I have a, uh, non-public that I, uh, that I can give an update on negotiations, otherwise, uh, we've just been negotiating. Right, I mean, that's what we've been doing, so.
That's what we've been doing, yeah.
Great, um, all right, health and wellness, Jim or Julia?
Uh, I don't have anything to report on health and wellness yet.
Um, finance and budget, um, we, we're just getting going, um, so now that we have, uh, you know, uh, the other spot filled, Wayne, we should, you know, figure out about the finance committee part of it, so, you know, so just, we can be in touch about that.
And we did have a date, uh, that we, November eighth, that we had talked about, uh, but we're, right now, uh, we're, we're waiting to make sure that, uh, our VA is, I don't want to, don't want them, you know, there's a big challenge to have an audit right in the middle of all of this process, so she's really getting up to speak fast, and I'm very confident, but that would be our goal, would be November eighth, I think at a time of five thirty-six or something, we've identified.
Yeah, I think so.
So Jody would also be the chair of that committee, I'll be there, but, um.
Yeah, we have. That's a Monday.
Yeah, we already have a negotiation.
That's a negotiation.
So we were gonna do it prior to negotiations, so then we could get, get, get the people who are already gonna be negotiating.
So this is for the finance, we're talking about, so, and that's April? Were you finance? Who just joined finance, I'm sorry?
April and me.
April and me, okay, thank you. So Monday, November eighth, April, does that work for you?
November eighth, yeah, I believe it does.
Okay.
At what time again?
Yeah, what time is that?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
We said five or five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty.
We only give you a half an hour, so.
Right.
I mean.
So five is a lot.
We might want to do it at five. Does five work for you, April?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that, that'll work for me too.
Uh, I think Joe and Ann are on that, I don't know, I'm not so sure, but we'll figure it out.
So I could send you some information, uh, that I want to discuss that finance a, a while back, so should I send that to Jody, or do you still have that? Because we were supposed to be, you know, the board members were supposed to be able to give input to the committee.
Um, send it to, uh, I need to find it, I know I have it in my folder for it, in my email, um, I, yeah, I'll pass that along to April and Wayne and Jody, how does that sound?
Because if Jody's the chair, I should just send stuff to Jody.
Jody is our admin, uh, you know, the, this group may decide they want a board member as a chair, but our point person of the admin is Jody.
Okay, all right.
I mean, whatever you want, I mean, I have it.
If you have it, if you can, if you can bring it to me, that'd be great.
I have it, so I'll, I'll send it, it just took me a minute to remember, because this was a while ago, what you were saying, so, um, but I do, I do have that, um, let me just make a note. Yeah, so I'll, I'll for, I'll send that along, thank you. All right, uh, staff development, there's probably been nothing.
Nothing to report at this time, no.
Thank you, uh, legislation, legislative NHSBA, Jim?
Yes, so, um, at federal level, uh, I guess there's a new law that's, that's been passed, that tasks the homeland security with conducting, uh, KFC Phil's cyber security risk assessment. Uh, and that assessment is due to be presented back to Congress, uh, in a report by February fifth, so we should look at that, something happening with that at a federal level. Um, and then, of course, the annual meeting for NHSBA that's coming up on Saturday, and, uh, I'll be there representing the district.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, yeah, so Jim and I are, are gonna go over together and carpool with a member from Chesterfield, I believe, so I think it'll be a, it'll be, oh, and Jim, it's, it's at the Propona Center, not at LGC, okay, good, just, just so we both know, so we don't automatically go to LGC. All right, uh, has, um, we, you know, I reported that last time, that was our quarterly meeting, so nothing there, um, select them?
There's nothing really new of, uh, as far as like regular town business, I will say that next Monday, uh, at six o'clock, they are having a meeting, the next update meeting for the next era solar project that's coming down on Monument Road, um, so that is coming closer to actually happening. They're gonna be applying for, um, the last of the premise, I think it's the last of the premise they need, but they are having a public engagement session at the select the meeting, um, to talk about the project and hopefully, you know, public attends.
Cool. Thank you. Um, so facilities?
Facilities, uh, we have another meeting coming up, um, I think Friday, right? Yeah, and, um, we do have a, uh, five-year, uh, rotating, uh, facility inspection by Marjorie, is that her name, Shoemaker? Uh, that's, uh, gonna impact the elementary school this year, and I don't know if Joe has any updates, uh, the last thing I have is from Amy Clark on September tenth, but maybe.
Yeah, she's coming on November third from eight to ten AM, you know, do a tour of the building, and we'll get the documents in with regard to fire inspection, health inspection, you know, fire exits, entry, signage, so on and so forth.
So that's, that's, uh, I guess she's very detailed.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, so.
She has a nose for what she does.
She has a nose, all right.
And she was, this is similar, she was in, in, in the middle high school like two years ago or something, right? Yeah, she does, yeah, she's thorough.
She's an inspector.
Yeah.
So that is a big thing that's gonna impact, uh, the district.
So we're in really good shape, the PTA was great, helped it to fix up some of the, uh, safety hazards with the tarp that's coming up, you know, the, in the playground area. And we're in good shape with respect to all the equipment, uh, it's been all checked over and maintained and secured, so. That was taken care of a couple of years ago, so every five years, you have to have an official playground review.
Good, okay.
I think we're in pretty good shape.
Good, uh, so, yeah, that's, that's what I have, facilities, oh, and of course we have the new, um, CIP that we presented to discuss with the select.
Okay, thank you. Um, community connections, um, we don't have anything to report other than we're engaging on Facebook and posting.
Right, and I can send April up as an admin, then you guys can.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and she'll, I'll talk about, you know, it's a big thing, remembering to turn commenting off.
Correct, that's, that's the big turn commenting off.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thanks, um, tuition, we don't have anything for that, um, behavior support team.
So who, like, how, when are we gonna meet, and who should I contact about finding out when we're gonna meet?
Typically, it's a quarterly group that meets with the coordinators, including Sarah, Donna Newe, and Tim Fleming, the principals are there. Chair was.
Was Kayla, yeah.
Kayla, yeah.
So should we meet, even if it's off schedule, sooner rather than later, to get that all set up?
I think it would be a great idea, there's, the timing.
We haven't met in a long time.
I mean, there's a lot going on, so.
There's a lot.
Yeah, so who would organize that, since there's no chair there right now, so.
I, I guess I would ask, uh, Ann or Joe, if you want to volunteer.
Yeah, I can get in contact with, uh, Eric Mann, because I think we'd want to have him present as well.
Okay.
If he would.
Yeah.
I don't know for sure, but, um, I can get in touch with him, see what available dates he has. I see, um, a Friday's still better for you.
Fridays, for, for, for this, Friday's my best day, but for this, um, I will, if I know it far enough ahead of time, I'll just put in for a day off, and I'll just make sure to be here, so.
I'll get some dates and send it to Julia and you, and Ann, and Eric, and Sarah, and Tim, and we'll find a day to get together.
Great, that works for me.
Usually need for forty-five minutes to an hour when we meet.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you, um, joint loss, um, we are meeting from last, uh, was supposed to be a few weeks ago, but rescheduled, and I don't have it on my calendar, I know I have the email, but we have one coming up, right? Eighteenth, yes, thank you, I knew it was coming up in October, so we have a meeting coming up on October eighteenth. All right, so, um, next up is citizen comments, um, there are no citizens here, so Ann, if, uh, take, uh, care of the citizen comments on Zoom.
iPhone? Donna, do you have anything?
All set, thank you.
Patty, do you have anything?
All set, thank you.
Teresa, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Is that it?
Teresa did note in the chat that the middle high school ratified it prior to the elementary school and the prior meeting, so it was, they were done in two separate.
Yeah, middle high, middle high school was done earlier, then we had to work out those details with elementary, yep.
Thank you, Teresa. Um, okay, so if, uh, there's nothing else, I just need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, roll call, yes?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you, all right, thank you, everyone, um, I know, uh.
I need Jody for two items, if we do that first.
And then, and then we need Jody for the negotiation stuff, and also put Ann and Chris to wait somewhere so we can talk about behavior support stuff.
Yeah. I'll wait for a few minutes, I don't think that's gonna be long.
What's my story?
I don't think we need to do that.
I don't need you for anything, I mean, not tonight, anyway. I think for three, I think that's the pass.
Look at you, Joe, seven thirty, you're out.
All right.
Look at that, we were joking about being done by seven thirty, but.
We were.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah, you're, you're just about done, we'll, we'll be a little bit longer, but.
Not too long.
What's happening?
Are we good?
And you'll want to be turning the recording off.
Oh.